Revelation, Chapter 6. Let's begin with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your word. Lord, I know today is going to be challenging. I'm challenged, Lord, by your word. But it's true, and we receive it by faith. And thank you for revealing who you are. Lord, that you have authority over all creation. And even over things that we would prefer you to maybe do in a different way. Yet, your ways are not our ways, and neither are your thoughts, our thoughts, declares the Lord. And we're grateful for that. Because it means that many people come to know Jesus as Savior. So, Lord, we pray your blessing upon the hearing, and the reading, and the interpreting of your word. For we ask it in the name of Jesus. And everyone said, amen. So, just a little review. So, we've been through five chapters so far in Revelation. And one of the things that we started off with is, Chapter 1 really reveals a couple of things. First and foremost, it reveals the genre. So, it's apocalyptic literature. That means numbers, that means colors, that means signs and symbols. All really have, really, really mean a lot. And so, that's number one. But it's the apocalypse or the revelation of Jesus Christ. So, it's about him. It's about revealing who is Jesus for the sake of the world, for the sake of you and I. So, that's Revelation, Chapter 1. Then Revelation, Chapter 2 enters into this first of multiple sevens. So, the idea is that you have seven churches that are real churches. But it's also representative of all churches across time, from Christ's ascension all the way up to the end. So, you have this kind of going around it. You're looking at different aspects of the church, right? And so, we're seeing what is going on in those particular churches. But then we reflect, and we say, well, you know, the same thing is happening today too, right? So, you have this way of kind of seeing it's then, but it's still, it's also for today as well. So, you're kind of walking around each church. But you're working your way around the church seven times and seeing, yeah, the church hasn't gotten, it's still dealing with the same situation. So, that's the first seven. Then we go into, there's an interlude in Chapters 4 and 5. And we go into this kind of throne room of heaven and see Jesus arrayed in splendor. And we see God the Father, and then he's holding these seven seals. And who can open the scroll? And the Lamb of God steps forward, and he is worthy to open the scroll. So, that's Chapters 4 and 5. Chapter 6, and 7, and 8 are really the unlocking of these seven scrolls. So, as I mentioned to you, there are people that are Jesus-loving, they're saved, they're, but they see it, they see Revelation as linear. Meaning, you go from seal number one all the way through the seven trumpets, the seven bulls. And they see it as a linear in time. So, what I'm going to encourage you to think about is, as we go into the seven seals, and the seven trumpets, and the seven bulls, it's all the same story told in a little bit different way. So, basically, what you're doing is, we're seeing what's happening in the world, from Christ's ascension up to the end, and it includes everything, okay? So, the seven seals tell the story, from Christ's ascension up to the end. The seven trumpets tell the same story, but just in a little bit different perspective. The seven bulls tell the exact same story. In other words, it's not a progression. It's just, we're looking at it from different perspectives, okay? So, we're going to get into these seven seals. So, as a reminder, Jesus is the one who is going to be mediating this particular vision. Especially with the seven seals, and the seven trumpets, and in the seven bulls. He's going to give the authority to angels to mediate those. We'll get into that. But Jesus is the one who is popping these seals. So, before we get into Chapter 6, any other, any questions lingering out there? Before we get into, start popping some seals here, okay? All right, so Revelation, Chapter 6, verse 1. "Now I watched when the Lamb opened one of the seven seals. And I heard one of the four living creatures say with a voice like thunder, 'Come!' And I looked, and behold, a white horse, and its rider had a bow, and a crown was given to him; and he came out conquering to conquer." Okay, so we've got to get a couple of things straight here before we continue. So, number one is that Jesus is the one who has authority, and he's the one opening the scroll. Then what is happening is these four living creatures, we saw them in Chapters 4 and 5, along with the 24 elders, right? So, these creatures are, they serve God Almighty. So, here's what's happening. And we're going to struggle with this, you're going to, I struggle with this, okay? Is Jesus opens this scroll, and out come, and so then what happens is, one of the four living creatures says, 'Come.' What comes out is a horse that brings death and destruction. Do you all have a problem with that? You probably should, so yes? Okay, so we're going to get into that. So, he's right. There's some debate on which one is the white horse. So, because again, white is, white symbolizes righteousness, right? So, there's probably three popular, or four popular ways to understand that white horse. One would be that it's Jesus Christ himself. I'll just say, I'm going to get into that one, because it just doesn't make sense with the context. Another one could be the church. Again, but we talked, especially last week, is what is the church armed with? Is we are priests, and we're armed not with a sword and a crown, or with, I'm sorry, with a bow. But we're armed with the gospel, okay? So, it really can't be the church. Others, probably there's two popular ways of understanding it. One would be that it's false teaching, that it's false religion, okay? I'm persuaded by that, I can be persuaded by that. I don't think that that's wrong. But I think probably the most popular one, which I would say this is really what this white horse is, is it is world governments. It is nations and that, I mean, so think of it this way. You know, when a guy in charge of a country decides to invade another country that is clear across the world, does that affect you? Sure does. You know, either that is because my gas is more expensive, or whatever, right? So, all of these things, so you could also call this tyranny or oppression, really of any kind. So, of people that dominate other people. Maybe it's not just world governments, but the crown on the head is kind of what we want to be thinking about. So, I want to put this in context a little bit. So, as we've said before, Revelation is going to be the most rich Old Testament book in the New Testament, okay? So, I want you to turn over to the Old Testament book of Zechariah. And we're going to go to Chapter 1 first, because again, Revelation is building off of imagery that's already well-understood within the hearers of the first century, okay? So, they would have, they'd know their Old Testament, and so they would kind of, I've heard that before, okay? So, Zechariah, Chapter 1, let's take a look at verse 8. Zechariah, Chapter 1, verse 8. "I saw in the night, and behold, a man riding on a red horse. He was standing among the myrtle trees in the glen, and behind him were red, sorrel, and white horses. When I said, 'What are these, my lord?' The angel who talked with me said to me, 'I will show you what they are.' So, the man who was standing among the myrtle trees answered, 'These are they whom the Lord has sent to patrol the earth.'" So, turn over into Zechariah, Chapter 6. And we're going to see just exactly what they're going to be patrolling. So, Zechariah, Chapter 6, verse 1. So, these are horses, but they're also chariots. Zechariah, Chapter 6, verse 1. "And again I lifted my eyes and saw, and behold, four chariots came out from between two mountains; and the mountains were mountains of bronze. The first chariot had red horses, the second black horses, the third white horses, and the fourth chariot dappled horses, all of them strong." So, what does the number 4 signify, remember in Revelation? North, south, east, west, right? So, it encompasses the whole world. So, it's the number for the world, okay? Verse 4. "Then I answered and said to the angel who talked with me, 'What are these horses, what are these, my lord?' And the angel answered and said to me, 'These are going out to the four winds of heaven, after presenting themselves before the Lord of all the earth. The chariot with the black horses goes toward the north country, the white goes after them, and the dappled ones go toward the south country. When the strong horses come out, they were impatient to go and patrol the earth; and he said, 'Go, patrol the earth.' So, they patrolled the earth; and then he cried to me, 'Behold, those who go toward the north country have set my spirit at rest in the north country.'" So, these are, you could say, horses of heaven. These are horses that have gone out to do, to patrol, to do good things, right? They're good things that are happening. The four horsemen in the, or the four horses in Revelation, Chapter 6, these are really horses of hell, of destruction, of disaster, of death, of bad stuff, okay? So, so this first horse, back to Revelation, Chapter 6. And when it says, "And I looked, and behold, a white horse, and its rider had a bow." When you're in the first century and you're thinking of a horse, what are you thinking of? You're not thinking of me and taking care of Savannah and Nicole. You're not thinking that. What are you thinking? You're thinking something military. You're thinking war, okay? You're thinking, there's an army coming against me, okay? So, these are, these are not exactly, these are not good things. And so, each one of these seals, we're going to say, don't break another one, because it's going to keep coming. So, here's what we want to do, is we want to think about, how is it working in our world today? We want to take this and see, how is it been that countries, governments, authorities have gone out over the earth, they're dressed in white, so what are they doing? They're thinking that what they're, they're trying to make you think that what they're doing is good. They're justifying themselves. And what people are doing is, people are getting caught up in all of that. Have we seen that happen over the last 2,000 years? Yes, Patsy?
Um, possibly. The only reason I would pause in terms of Antichrist. So, in Chapter 19 of Revelation, Jesus is going to be riding a white horse, okay? So, don't, so don't bring that into, that's why people argue that maybe this is Jesus. It could be Antichrist only in the sense that it's positioning itself, the Antichrist positions himself or herself in the position of being, having authority. False authority. Correct. And so, I would say, we are not relating this white horse to Christ later. So, therefore, and we're going to see, all of these horses do bring destruction with them. And we're going to see that, and then we're going to see what God's response is to it, okay? Any other questions? Good question? All right, so what I want you to do is, I want you to see here what God intends. Because if we're thinking about these, this rider on the white horse as a ruler, as an authority, there's, the Bible has a lot to say about how these rulers and authorities actually rule. And so, I want you to turn to your Bibles to Leviticus, Chapter 26. So, these four horses are going to affect and impact the whole world. What we're going to, what I'm going to be thinking, what I want you to be thinking about here for just a few minutes is God's plan for his covenant people. So, he has set aside that there will be punishments, there will be things that will happen. And so, apologize, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, turn in your Bibles instead, don't turn Leviticus, turn to Deuteronomy, Chapter 17. Deuteronomy 17. So, we want to think about kings. What are people supposed to do that have authority, these kings? What are they supposed to do? So, you've heard the story of Samuel, right? In Israel, they all say to, we want a king, right? And that's a problem, right? And we think to ourselves, well, God never intended for them to have a king. Well, that's not necessarily true. He meant for them to have a king, but never forget who the capital K king is, right? So, here's kind of the job description of a king, Deuteronomy, Chapter 17. "So, when you come into the land that the Lord your God is giving you," I'm sorry, this is verse 14, "and you possess it and dwell in it, and then say, 'I will set a king over me like all the nations that are around me.' You may indeed set a king over you, whom the Lord your God will choose. One from among your brothers you shall set as king over you. You may not put a foreigner over you who is not your brother; only he must not acquire many horses for himself, or cause the people to return to Egypt.'" Why is that? Why should he not have very many horses? Correct. So, don't accumulate power for yourself, because at some point in time, you're going to say, it is my own strength, it's not God's strength, okay? And don't let them return to Egypt. And it's not just the country of Egypt, but it's, don't let them return to slavery, okay? "In order to acquire many horses, since the Lord has said to you, you shall never return that way again." Verse 17. "And he shall not acquire many wives for himself, lest his heart turn away, nor shall he acquire for himself excessive silver or gold. And when he sits on the throne of his kingdom, he shall write for himself in a book a copy of this law, approved by the Levitical priests, and it shall be with him, and he shall read it in it all the days of his life, that he may learn to fear the Lord his God by keeping all the words of this law in these statutes and doing them; that his heart may not be lifted up above his brothers, and that he may not turn aside from the commandment, either to the right hand or to the left, so that he may continue long in his kingdom, he and his children in Israel." So, that's kind of the job description. Do they do it, yes or no? No, they don't do it, okay? So, turn in your Bibles over to 1 Samuel, Chapter 8. So, here's the, here's what we tend to think about. So, this begins in verse 4. So, this is Israel desiring a king. So, 1 Samuel, Chapter 8, verse 4. "Then all the elders of Israel gathered together and came to Samuel at Ramah, and said to him, 'Behold, you are old, and your sons do not walk in your ways; now appoint for us a king to judge us like all the nations.'" "But this displeased Samuel, when they said, 'Give us a king to judge us,' and Samuel prayed to the Lord. And the Lord said to Samuel, 'Obey the voice of the people and all that they say to you; for they have not rejected you, but they have rejected me from being king over them.'" That's a really big deal, okay? "According to all the deeds that they have done, from the day I brought them up out of Egypt, even to this day forsaking me and serving other gods, so they are also doing to you." So, now, go to verse 10. Samuel warns them, says, okay, if you set, if you put a king over yourself like the other nations, here's what's going to happen. Verse 10. "So Samuel told all the words of the Lord of the people who were asking for a king from him. He said, 'These will be the ways of the king who will reign over you. He will take your sons and appoint them to his chariots, and to be his horsemen, and to run before his chariots; and he will appoint for himself commanders of thousands and commanders of fifties, and some to plow his ground and to reap his harvest, and to make his implements of war, and the equipment of his chariots. He will take your daughters to be perfumers and cooks and bakers; he will take the best of your fields and vineyards and olive orchards, and give them to his servants; he will take the tenth of your grain, of your vineyards, and give it to his officers and to his servants; he will take your male servants and female servants, and the best of your young men and your donkeys, and put them to his work; he will take the tenth of your flocks, and you shall be his slaves.'" In other words, he's going to take you right back to Egypt. And what happens, the people say, so what? We want one. Okay, so, again, fast forward a little bit. Chapter 9, 1 Samuel, Chapter 9, verse 15. "Now the day before Saul," so 1 King. "Now the day before Saul came, the Lord had revealed to Samuel, 'Tomorrow about this time I will send to you a man from the land of Benjamin; and you shall anoint him to be.'" Really important here, underline it in your Bibles. It does not say king, does it? It says prince. It's prince. So, again, you have capital K, who's, capital K king, who's that? God's the capital K king. Saul is supposed to be prince. He's supposed to be leader, okay? Is that how it ends up? No. Verse, Chapter 10, verse 1. "Then Samuel took a flask of oil and poured it on his head, and kissed him, and said, 'Has not the Lord anointed you to be prince over his people?'" So, again, here's what happens, is again, 2 Samuel, Chapter 7. This is what God has intended for David. So, again, just want you to see where this, how this plays out. So, 2 Samuel, Chapter 7, verse 8. "Now therefore thus you shall say to my servant David, 'Thus says the Lord of hosts, I took you from the pasture, from following the sheep, that you should be prince over my people Israel.'" So, here's what's happening. So, we're going back to the white horse with the crown and the bow. Is, these are people, and the kings of Israel did exactly the same thing. And then what they do is, they come in and they conquer people. And they express tyranny over people. Never was God's intention, but in terms of this white horse, it's happening. So, practically speaking, how are we seeing that work right now in the world? Give me an example. Russia? It's happening? Anybody else? How do you see it? Huh? Israel and Hamas? Okay? How about in your lifetime? Maybe not just right now, but how about in your lifetime? Some of you are of the World War II generation. Some of you, Hitler. Some of you are of the Vietnam generation. The Cold War. I mean, all of this stuff is happening in our lifetime. And this is the evidence of this white horse. Y'all follow me so far? Questions? All right, so let's keep, let's keep going here. Verse 3. "So when he, that is the Lamb, opened the second seal, I heard the second living creature say, 'Come.'" Uh-oh, here comes another horse. "And out came another horse, bright red. Its rider was permitted to take peace from the earth, so that the people would slay one another; and he was given a great sword." So, this horse and this rider, we would call that murder. We would call it human beings killing other human beings. How have we seen this red horse at work today? Tell me. Every day. I live about a half mile from here. Y'all know I grew up in Nebraska. I've never once in my lifetime, growing up in Nebraska, lived there for 30-plus years, never once did I hear a gunshot outside of my house. Anybody have heard a gunshot outside their house? Okay? Is the red horse riding? Yep. How else have we seen the red horse at work? The stabbing that happened. Can you believe that? At the high school in Frisco? Just horrible. How else you see it happening? Yep. It is awful, though. I mean, it's from, everything from abortion to what we do with not valuing life. I haven't added all of this up, but I don't know if you've seen this before, but there was some research that was done that said, from 1900 to 2000, there were more people killed in wars than the previous 1900 centuries combined. So, how many people died in World War II? You have any idea? 55 million people. Can you even wrap your brain around that? And that's just, that's just from the wars. And some estimates say it's as high as 85 million people. World War II, or World War I. Like 15 million people. And take all of the wars and put them all in a pot, and all of the civilian casualties, everything around the wars, and some estimates say 190, as many as 190 million people in 100 years. More than the previous 1900 years combined. Yes, so I'm glad that you, can you hear me? I'm glad that you bring that up. Because sometimes what we think to ourselves is, we're all, we're much more civilized. No, what we've done is, we've just figured out more efficient ways to kill more people. And so, this red horse is riding unbelievable. And it seems like just unleashed, okay? So, the red horse is murder. Verse 5. Any questions on that? Anybody follow me so far? Okay, verse 5. "When I opened the third seal, I heard the third living creature say, 'Come; and I looked, and behold, a black horse, and its rider had a pair of scales in his hand; and I heard what seemed to be a voice in the midst of the four living creatures saying, 'A quart of wheat for a denarius, and three quarts of barley for a denarius; and do not harm the oil and the wine.'" And then verse seven says, "And it's going to cost you $20 for a carton of eggs." Sorry, that's just, that, that must be... So what is this? What is, what is this black horse? Uh, th- this is economic imbalance. This is, um, famine, pestilence, uh, those kinds of things. Uh, that, that there's, there's things that are, are scarce. And what are the things that are scarce? You, the, the basics of life are scarce, but you can, you know, it's, uh, a, a loaf of bread costs you an entire day's wage where you can go get wine and it's cheap. And some of you say, "Yeah, that's good with me." Uh, but, uh, but these are the things that, that sustain life, that keep you alive. And, and this is this, it's out of balance. I mentioned a carton of eggs, but anybody else, can you think of how this black horse is impacting your life today? Yeah? Yeah, so Walt is saying that, um, you know, as these horses are impacting our lives, it makes us more anxious, more angry, uh, more willing to react to people and cause greater harm to people. Um, one of the questions I want you to, so, so really quick, um, these four horses, who do they impact? Everybody? What about you? The church? Okay, so, so the, so the question is, you've got to wrestle with this because the answer to that question, "What about the church?" The answer to that is going to come in chapter seven. Okay? So yes. Hmm, sure. Yes, um, so sometimes what happens, so correct me if I'm misinterpreting what you're saying, is, um, we get, people get into a place where if you just had enough to eat one day, is that good enough for you? If we're honest, we probably say, "No, I need more. I need more than just enough to eat." Well, the scriptures are, are really pointing us to the fact that there's a day that's coming when, when people won't even have what they need just to eat one day. Okay? You might have oil and you might have wine, but that's not going to, you're not going to survive on that. Right? So, so just the, just the basics of life are going to be very, very difficult, okay? Um, and we do, we, we, I don't want just the basics of life. I want more, which causes me to then lash out, right? Did I pick, did I pick up what you were saying? Okay, all right. Verse, uh, verse seven. So here's the last one. "When he opened the fourth seal, I heard the voice of the fourth living creature say, 'Come.' And I looked, a pale horse." Uh, so anybody seen Lord of the Rings before? You know, that, 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 uh, at the end of the movie, which, you know, if you're like me and you watch the movie, you're like, "Why didn't he go get that army at the beginning?" And then like, you know, he could have saved a whole lot of trouble, but anyway. Uh, so he goes and gets this, this army of dead people and they're kind of this, this greenish color, right? So most, most people say that's probably this color, it's this pale kind of, bleh, green color is, is what this pale horse is. And its rider, its rider's name was Death. And Hades followed him. So Hades is used a lot of different ways, uh, in the Bible here. Uh, I'm going to encourage you just to think about, uh, death and the grave. So Hades is not, uh, kind of the idea of hell, but it's just death and the grave and being six feet under. That's, that's the, the context here, okay? So, um, and they, and so then here's the latter part of verse eight. "And they," now this is all of the horses, "they were given authority over a fourth of the earth, to kill with sword, and with famine, and with pestilence, and by wild beasts of the earth." So again, do you ha, do you struggle with the fact that God is reigning and ruling through these four horses that are causing so much destruction, yet in his grace and kindness, he's saying, he's limiting them? So he gives them authority o, over only a quarter. Okay? So he says, "The other 75% you can't touch." So he's saying only on the quarter. So God in his mercy is limiting. So the Bible talks about a time, a times, and a half a time, and we're going to get to that. In the half a time, uh, it's like the, it's like the reins are, are let loose, okay? So we'll get to that and we'll talk about that. But do you have a, do you, do you struggle with that at all? That, that God would work through those things? Do you? Yes, I hope you do, yes. Yeah, it's a, it's, so what we want to, we, what we want to do is I think in each, in each and every one of us, we feel better when we say that God allows it. What do you think about God causing it? Do you struggle with that? I will just simply say to you as clearly as I can, we often desire to get God off the hook. I will say to you that God is not in his heavenly realm, wringing his hands, hoping that he can get off the hook. God has no problem being on the hook for everything. And we know that through the personal work of Jesus, that, that God places a curse on the world in the fall. And then, and then we're living in that curse, right? And then God says through the personal work of Jesus Christ, "I'm, I'm going to take that curse upon myself to set them free." Where does he do that? On the cross. So God is not in any way looking to, uh, get off the hook, okay? Is that clear? You get that question, Dana? Hmm. Okay, so here's, this is exactly where I want, where I want us to go. Is, this is really hard. Uh, what kind of God would allow these things or even cause these things to happen? And the answer is a loving God. How many of you have ever talked about, "Boy, I need the two by four upside the head"? Anybody ever said that? Just telling you for me, it takes a whole lot more than a two by four. Yes, Walt? Yes. Correct. So here's the, so, uh, the point is that I'm going to build on what you're saying, Walt, is all of these things that happen are God's, uh, way of leading us to repentance. So whether it is the white horse, whether it is the red horse, whether it's the black horse, whether it is the pale horse, that is, that is us saying, "I am not in control. Uh, these things are happening to me and God help me, help, uh, God save me." The theologians call this, uh, God's alien work. So this is where, this is, you know, we want to, uh, what's God's, uh, uh, revealed work? Is that he has mercy and love. Um, that's his revealed work, but his alien work is also to say, uh, if these things happen, uh, I'm, I, I am going to do these things to you. So, uh, this is not uncommon. Uh, this is in the Old Testament, and so I want you to, this is where I wanted you to turn in your, in your bibles to Leviticus. So turn to Leviticus, chapter 26. So the first half, verses one through 12 through, through 13, talk about the blessings. The blessings for following and, and for, uh, uh, abiding by the commandments and so forth. Uh, Leviticus 26, verse 14, and following is, this is what's going to happen if you disobey. So this is what it says. "But if you will not, not listen to me, and will not do all these commandments, if you spurn my statutes, and if your soul abhors my rules, so that you will not do all my commandments, but break my covenant, then I will do this to you. I will visit you with panic, with wasting disease, and fever that consumes the eyes, and makes the heart ache." It does not say, "I'm just going to allow these things to happen." God is, is, "I'm controlling these things. I'm working through these things." We're continuing. "And you shall sow your seed in vain, for your enemies shall eat it. I will set my face against you, and you shall be struck down before your enemies. Those who hate you shall rule over you, and you shall flee when none pursues you. And if in spite of this, you will not listen to me, if I've hit you upside the head 14 times with a two by four, and you still don't get the message, I'll keep going. Uh, and if in spite of this, you will not listen to me, then I will discipline you again, sevenfold for your sins. And I will break the pride of your power, and I will make your heavens like iron, and your earth like bronze. And your strength shall be, shall be spent in vain, for your land shall not yield its increase, and the trees of the land shall not yield their fruit. Then if you walk contrary to me, and will not listen to me, I will continue striking you sevenfold for your sins. And I will let loose the wild beasts." So here's, this is Revelation, chapter six. Uh, "I will let loose, uh, the wild beasts." Um, where am I, where am I at here? Verse 22. Uh, "which shall bereave you of your, bereeve you of your children, and destroy your livestock, and make you few in number, so that your roads shall be deserted." And it keeps going, okay? It's repeated, this is, this is all repeated in Deuteronomy, chapter 28. So here's what God is saying, is he's saying, "I'm, I'm going to do all of these things to you." Why? Because the path that you're on leads to destruction. And I love you too much to let you continue down a path of destruction. So back to, um, Revelation, chapter six. Um, I'm just going to give you a couple of passages, you can look them up later because we're running out of time. Uh, but you can write these down, Amos, chapter four, Jeremiah, chapter 14. These are two places where a prophet, where the people of God said, "Hey, wait a minute, there's a drought on the land, our enemies are beating us up, uh, we're being exiled out of Babylon. God, what gives? I thought we were your chosen people." We think in the Old Testament that the duty of the prophet is to like foretell the future. That's not their primary job. Their primary job is to come interpret what is happening in the world. And so when people see that there's a drought, when people see that, "Hey, wait a minute, well, I thought we were God's chosen people and we just got, uh, they just beat us up and we, we were defeated." What happened? The prophet's job is to come in and say, "You have sinned, repent. And when you repent, God will be full of grace and mercy, slow to anger, and bounding its steadfast love and mercy." That's the prophet's job. So in Amos, chapter four, Jeremiah, chapter 14, these are just two examples of, of what is happening. So when we see these hap, when we see these, these horses that are coming, white, red, black, pale, uh, what is, what is the message that God is sending to us? Repent. And we then also, we go through these things just like everybody else. Why? Because we're sinners just like everybody else. And then what we do is we say, "God is, God is loving and gracious and merciful, and he's inviting, and he's inviting us into a life of repentance. Would you join me?" So we're going to get into that a little bit more next week. Or I'm sorry, next week is Easter, so no, uh, no Bible study, but, uh, on the, what is it? The 27th, we'll get into that, uh, finish out chapter six. But I do want you to think about, as we're going through all of these things, we're asking the question, "God, what gives?" Uh, we're, we're the church, don't we have some benefits at least? And we'll see that in chapter seven, okay? So let's pray. Heavenly Father, uh, indeed, your ways are not our ways, nor your thoughts, our thoughts, declares the Lord. Heavenly Father, thank you for the lengths that you have gone to rescue a sinner like me. Lord, I thank you for, uh, moving heaven and earth with the personal work of Jesus Christ to save sinners like us. And Lord, we have no idea what it has taken you to get our attention, to keep us, uh, in faith, trusting you all of these years, but we know that you're at work. And we trust you, uh, come what may. Lord, remind us of the mission that you call us into for the sake of those who don't know Jesus. We pray in his name. Amen. God bless you all. See you next week.